United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment for a moment of silence for two people we lost this last week, number one Dennis Hardisty, who ran the Hammond Boxing Club, and number two, longtime precinct committeeman Mark Spack, and I know Katrina, you had.
Yes, we're also going to take a moment of silence for the two students from East Chicago Central that lost their lives this past weekend. They were personal students of mine, so if you can continue to keep that school in your prayers.
We'll go with roll call.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here, nine present and in chambers. Mayor's address?
Hi, good to see the council, good to see packed council chambers as well. It's good to see everybody here. While everybody's here, I want to remind everybody, we have one week to go until Election Day and make sure everybody gets out and votes. Before Election Day, everybody watching at home, municipal elections sometimes have very low voter turnouts, and we want a big voter turnout. So I want to remind everybody, I voted in Crown Point because it was easy for me. I was down there and I walked by the voter booth, but everybody has the ability to vote anywhere in Lake County at any of the voting sites, except for on Election Day, and on Election Day, you have to go to your polling place. So don't forget to vote. Municipal elections, one week from tomorrow. So thanks for the address. Summarize what we've been doing the past couple weeks. I did attend the Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner at the Dynasty. I know a number of the council people were there. It was sort of a going away party for Dave Ryan and for Jeff Williams. We're going to miss them. We also celebrated teachers and firemen and police officers of the year. It was a great event, a lot of fun. Dane Cook played the Horseshoe Casino on Saturday. It's a, I'm not, I would normally not put that in the mayor's report, but I haven't seen Horseshoe Casino that packed since before the pandemic. It was great that Dane Cook was there. He's been there before. More importantly, I walked through the casino floor and saw a jam-packed Horseshoe Casino, and I haven't seen a jam-packed Horseshoe Casino in a long time. So if the executives at Horseshoe are watching, thank you for competing. Again, it's good to see Horseshoe packed again. So hopefully the numbers will reflect that. Economic development-wise, we had a couple meetings in the past couple weeks. One real big proposal for Hessville, a big proposal, a hundred million dollar proposal that we're looking at right now. Another one near the sportsplex, the new YMCA that's getting built there, big proposals, exciting proposals. Can't talk about them too much in detail right now, but it's good to see so much interest from outside of our city and investing into our city. Makes me optimistic. Attended the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch meeting. A number of council people were there that day also. It's great to be back on the crime watch circuit. At that meeting, we talked about, at that time, how we had to delay the opening of MLK Basketball Court press conference. We moved it back to this upcoming Saturday, which is also proving to be problematic. So I'm here to announce, we're moving it back one more week, and that'll be the final move back. We're putting the MLK press conference on Saturday, May 6th at 10:00 a.m. I apologize to the kids that are waiting. I apologize to the neighborhood. We need to have this press conference before they're open, and Mother Nature is not cooperating. And plus, the Saturday we're going to do it is very complicated with a number of other grand openings that council people are going to be in attendance at. So May 6th will be the day. The neighborhood's ready. Public works-wise, we've done all the work we need to do to get ready for the grand opening. So Fire Station Number Two, I know is on the agenda today. A resolution's on the agenda regarding Hassy Construction as the BOT contractor. I know we've been talking about Fire Station Number Two for a while now. In fact, a year ago, we thought we were going to do this project when the bids came back way too high. We bounced the bids a year ago, saved a million dollars. The bids are still higher than we anticipated, so we're trying to make it work. We did save a million dollars by waiting a year. We hope to save more than that. I don't know if it's worth it at this point, waiting any longer. Right now, we're at a final cost of $2 million, excuse me, $8 million. We're going to use a million dollars from both Councilman Dave Hamm, Lake County Councilman Dave Hamm, Lake County Councilwoman Christine Sid. Please make sure you thank them when you see them. They've donated ARP money from Lake County towards this project. $2 million from Councilwoman Christine Sid from East Chicago and Councilman Dave Hamm, which is helping us finance this project. We're using $2.5 million ARP money and saving a million dollars of that ARP money so that we can get a project done in third district that we're working with Councilman Tyler on regards to Memorial Park. And then the rest of the money, we're going to finance using the BOT process that you're all approving tonight. Once you guys get done approving this, hopefully it'll be approved in the affirmative. We still have work to do with redevelopment. But basically, Fire Station Number Two, we hope to begin construction in July, and it should last around a year. I'm very excited about this project. It's going to be a similar look to the pavilion because it's literally across the street with a similar layout to the Fire Station Number Eight in Hessville. I think it's going to be a huge addition. That firehouse is very old, so I know the firefighters at work there are very happy. And I was just there the other day talking to them. Last but not least, 2023 Festival of Lakes lineup is officially set now. Wednesday, July 12th, we have Ashante and Ja Rule playing. Thursday, July 13th, we have the Brothers Osborne Country. Friday, July 14th, Stone Temple Pilots. Saturday, July 15th, we have Lil Wayne. And Sunday, July 16th, we have El Flaco. We, I say this every year, I think it's our best lineup. I say it every year though, so when you say it every year, I don't know if it works. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything, but that's my report for the last couple weeks, so.
Any questions?
Good luck with your reelections to all of you. I appreciate the great work you've done for the city of Hammond over the last four years. I just want to say thank you and congratulations and good luck with everything. Thanks, council.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
The most accepted minutes for October, April 10th, 2023 be placed on file, please.
Mr. President.
Second. Second, Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. I'm sorry, I skipped the next one. Common Council Scholarship drawing.
Mr. President, we have, I'm sorry, Ms. Laney, Ms. Kimmensky here, that will be drawing scholarships today. She'll talk about how many numbers we have from each school. We do have four schools. We have Hammond Central, Hammond Morton, Haas, and Bishop Knoll that we'll be drawing for today. If any councilperson would like to draw a name, I'll start off. If you want to draw, you can meet us up there and pull a name out of our bag for today. Ms. Kimmensky.
Hi.
We have had, which was really wonderful this year, we had a total, we have a total of 812 Hammond seniors, which are represented from Bishop Knoll, Haast, Hammond Central High School, and Morton. Out of those 812 seniors, 142 have applied for this scholarship. The scholarships will be presented, 34 seniors from Bishop Knoll, so one will be from Bishop Knoll. Haast had 55. One will be presented to Haast. Hammond Central, 412 seniors, so they get seven scholarships. And Morton has 311, and they get six scholarships. This is based on a formula of Hammond seniors at each school divided by the total number of seniors reciting in Hammond, times the number of scholarships, 15, which gives us our numbers. So I have them ready to be chosen.
Dave, would you like to do Morton's?
No, you can.
I'll do Haast.
I'm a genius.
Elizabeth Guzman is the scholarship recipient from Haast.
Morton seniors, Markell Easel, Megan Whiteford, Trinity Belford, Angel Navarez, Madison Fleming, alternates are chosen in the event something happens and the students decide not to go to a four-year college or postpone it for a year, then we've used the alternates. Guerrero, Israel Diaz, Braylon Norwood, and Jania Cole. Two alternates, Egypt Retnu and Jessica Magnalinas.
Emerson.
Jacqueline Orozco from Bishop Knoll is the scholarship recipient. And the two alternates are Jacob Cardenas and Aleni Vasquez. I will send out invitations to the students, informing them that they have been chosen as winners, and invite them to the Hammond Common Council meeting, which is on the 22nd of May, with their family members to be presented a certificate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kimmensky, on everything that you do for us.
All right, we'll go back to approval of claims.
Mr. President, I request approval of claims, beginning with claims dated April 17th, 2023, and ending with claims dated April 19th, 2023, claim number 2323 through claim number 2624 inclusive, in the amount of $4,752,833.74. I so much.
Second.
Yes.
Spitali.
Speaker.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos. Yes. Claim spent is 9-0. Next up, committee report. I'm sorry, communications. Excuse me again.
No public hearings.
Next up, public hearings.
23R-03, award, I'm sorry, awarding build, operate, transfer agreement, and taking certain other related actions.
Does anybody wish to speak on that issue in the public hearing?
Anybody wishing to speak on public hearing, public hearing reference 23R-03. Anybody wishing to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Your name?
Dave Matura.
Hi, Dave.
And is, this is about firehouse number two?
It is.
I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I fear that my comments are too late, but I don't know that I had an opportunity to talk before this time for or against the fire. I was at a rezoning meeting the other week, just recently, about Clark Field being rezoned from institutional to residential. And there was an interesting remark in one of the documents from the planning department. I think Mr. Poland may have written it. And it said, "The existing firehouse is operational and in good condition." And I thought to myself, "It's in good condition?" Yet I hear the mayor say, "We're going to spend $8 million on replacing a building that the city of Hammond says is in good condition." And I couldn't agree more. It is in good condition. I see a fire trucks go in and out every day, and I don't see any problems with it. They may say that there's problems pulling out on Calumet Avenue, but where the new firehouse is going to be, we're going to be pulling out on Calumet Avenue. I hear the fire chief say, "Well, the trucks are so much bigger these days than in the old days. The existing firehouse is too small." And I thought about that, and I thought, "How could the trucks be any bigger? They're not making the roads any wider. The lane is a lane." So I think the truck is as wide as a truck can be because if they made it any wider, it couldn't go down the street. So I thought, "Maybe it's longer, maybe it's taller, but it's not any wider." And would that justify $8 million? I don't think so. My house is in that neighborhood in Robertsdale. It's older than the firehouse. We just spent some money and reconditioned it, new electricity, new wires, new kitchen. And I think, well, everybody says the firemen will be thrilled with this new firehouse. Well, why don't we put an addition next to the firehouse with new bedding and a new kitchen and a new weight room? And I'm sure that's not going to cost $8 million. And why am I driving towards this? Because I thought, "What a shame that the environmental center was closed. What a shame that those people were evicted. There couldn't have been a better location in Lake County to educate our children about the environmental needs." You're there, and you say, "Hey, there's Wolf Lake. Fantastic. Hey, there's George Lake. Fantastic. Hey, there's this big green field, Clark Field, behind me." What a better location for environmental center. Oh, that's just for the kids. Kick them out. Put them in Maryville somewhere on some main street, so when they open the door, they can see cars driving by. And when the ladies say, "Hey, kids, let's go take a hike on the trail here and go to the lakes," oh, we don't have that anymore. Why? Because we're going to put that new fire station there. Of all, of all the places, you're going to put it where the environmental center was. Yeah, that's the decision. Did we get to comment on it? No, I'm afraid not. So when, it just boggles my mind that we're replacing a building rather than reconditioning it, and then not only are we replacing it, we're putting in the, in the worst location possible. And I said, "Okay, fine. That's all done with. What can you do?" Hmm. Well, now we've got this pavilion across the street from it, and the mayor and the city want to bring all these shows there and make it a showplace and bring all these people in. And I think, is that where you'd want to locate an emergency facility where your fire trucks and ambulances are going to be going in and out? I thought, "I don't think so," but I didn't get a chance to speak on it. Sounds like that deal was already done. And I just can't, for the life of me, figure it out. I don't see any advantage of putting it in that location, knowing the costs that we already paid, that our children are supposed to be, as we know, the world is kind of going down the wrong road as far as the environment's concerned. And I can't think of anything more important than to educate them to take care of the world, take care of the environment. And we took them out of that location. We're going to put this firehouse there. So those are my thoughts. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Any other speakers on public hearing for 23R-03?
Carolyn Marsh, 1804 Oliver Street, Whiting. First of all, I did see the agenda for the first time today, and I would never recognize the resolution or what you're voting on now on the firehouse is about Clark Field and that area because it's all under 2201 Calumet Avenue. As a wildlife activist, as a 30-year bird watcher, I'm very concerned about George Lake. The firehouse is going to be abut George Lake, a federally protected wetland. It's unheard of, I think, in the country for, in this day and age, for a city to put its new firehouse, which has plenty of vacant land near it, that's not across from Wolf Lake and abuts George Lake. It's unheard of to put a firehouse 24/7 activity that's abutting a wetland, a wetland that money is spent to restore it right on that edge, on that edge that will be the backyard of the firehouse. This is, it's just unconscionable what the city is doing. We really need to respect the areas, the wetlands, the lakes that we have. Wolf Lake is not swimmable. George Lake is polluted, legacy pollution from Federated Metals, also from Polyjon. And now you're adding to the pollution with 24/7 activity from a firehouse. This is just unbelievably rolling back environmental standards. And it fits in kind of with the state. The state is rolling back environmental wetland regulations so they can fill in wetlands for development, for real estate, and for home builders and the building industry. I really object to this, and I don't understand it, and I think it's really a step backward. When I fought for the Hammond Bird Sanctuary in the lakefront, when I fought for mitigation of the golf course at George Lake, now I see, and had wins there, without a lawyer, without legal help. And now, I'm, we're going backwards. Now here I am again, fighting for George Lake to save a wetland. From what? A firehouse? I just don't, I don't understand that at all. So I think that Hammond has financial problems. You're needing help to, you know, for this $8 million. I think there's so many better ways to make the Hammond livable. We all share, we're all one community, Whiting and Robertsdale. We all share the lakefront. We share George Lake and Wolf Lake. And I think that what Hammond is doing, what the mayor is doing in particular, is a real setback. You know, I'm going to say this because Mayor McDermott has ridiculed me for speaking in Hammond because I live in Whiting. But the thing is, I'm coming here to speak about Hammond because it's one community. Whiting and Robertsdale is one community. We depend on each other economically. And I appeal to all residents in this area to really be concerned about the area because we're not going to have any green space. We're not, the trees, when I look at Clark Field in the subdivision, the amount of green space is so pathetic. It's so minimal. It's really sad. It's really sad that the mayor of Hammond wants to take out the woods, Briar Woods in Hessville. It's a rollback. This is not progress. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the public hearing?
Hello, council. A couple things that the gentleman said. We have outgrown the station. The fire trucks are a lot bigger than they used to be, longer, higher. The ambulances, when I first got hired, we had, looked like a van that you could buy at a dealership. Now they're, they're six, six feet longer. They're a lot taller. They're boxier. They're just, there's more equipment that we carry on them anymore, so we have to have the bigger vehicles. We have outgrown it as far as the guys. The, 30 years ago when I got hired, we didn't have any workout equipment. Now we have a dedicated workout room in almost all the stations. At station two, it's cramped into the bedroom. The beds are all pushed together, a little bit tighter now. As far as backing in off of Calumet, pulling out on Calumet, yeah, obviously, we're going to have to pull out. With this new station, it's going to be about 150 feet back farther off of Calumet Avenue to where we can turn onto property without backing in off of the street. That's our biggest concern up there is because anybody's driven up there, if you are, saw the fire trucks back in. People go around us, people don't stop. They're just, they don't, they don't pay attention to lights and sirens. A couple other things. As far as adding on to the station, I don't even know if that's possible, you know? So that's it.
Chief Smith. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this?
Good evening, council. Kevin Smith, Corporation Counsel for the city. I just wanted to, kind of from a legal perspective, introduce the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the resolution. I also wanted to make sure that the council knew that both Greg Martz and Bill Hassy from Hassy Construction are on Zoom. Greg, we worked substantially with him on station eight and the BOT process. This resolution is one that will allow the financing and selection of the developer for the project. As the mayor pointed out, the timeline for construction is July this year through approximately late summer, early fall next year. So about a 12 to 14-month process. The financing of it is being paid through the council's dedication of ARP money, county council's dedication of ARP money, as well as other fees from the city, so no tax dollars involved. Also, I guess, the one thing I did want to just mention and point out, and I heard some earlier speakers talk about green space, I just wanted to remind the council and thank the council and the mayor for the dedication that they've had for making Wolf Lake accessible and increasing the green space over the last 15, 18 years. I know that when Councilman Kowinski took office, as well as the mayor, as well as the mayor, there were a lot of trucking concerns, environmental concerns around Wolf Lake. Now that is all green space accessible by the public. There's a six-mile loop for recreation. And that's a substantial increase of green space and accessibility to Wolf Lake in this surrounding area. So, as far as the fire station goes though, I just wanted to encourage the approval of the resolution. And of course, if there's any questions for Greg or Mr. Hassy, they're, they're on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Would either Greg or Greg Martz or William Hassy like to speak at this time?
From my perspective, I think Kevin outlined the next steps perfectly, which is that if council does move forward tonight with the project, then that would allow us to move forward with the community development mission as the next step. And so, so there will be further steps and further chances for the public to speak. And so we'll get right on those financing pieces right away if we're ready.
Thank you.
And to the councilwoman, Bill Hassy. We also have Jay Thompson in the audience if you have questions for either he or myself.
We can, we can have questions when we pass the, when we vote on the resolution. We can do that at that time. This is for public expression, not for us to ask questions. Any other public expression? Any other public expression? Public expression closed. Okay, communications. Any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
The mayor mentioned this, but I just want to make sure that the public is aware that the reopening of the MLK Park Basketball Courts has been pushed back another week due to the weather. So those basketball court, uh, the basketball courts will be reopened on Saturday, May 6th at 10:00 a.m. And then for everyone, there's also the YMCA groundbreaking this Friday, April 28th at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
I know that Ms. Kaminsky already said it, but just want to remind those scholarship recipients that we will have a meeting for them to receive their awards on May 22nd at our second meeting of that month of May. Just want to remind them and to be picture-ready because we'll be taking tons of pictures that day as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Capital improvements met on April 17th. Matters that were discussed was a $50,000 share of the Capital Improvement Board in conjunction with Councilman Tyler. That's contributing $50,000 too for the reconstruction of Road Street. Is that correct? Allocations that were approved, funding allocation redesign, Holman Avenue North approach at Sibley to First Group in the amount of $3,615. A new traffic signal at the Sportsplex to Geo-technical Services, Advanced Engineering Services in the amount of $11,850. And the funding allocation on Holman Avenue Reconstruction Phase 1 for change orders 8 and 9 to Reith Riley Construction for in the amount of $33,857.43. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warple.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, May 16th, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center beginning at 6:00 p.m. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, May 3rd, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 18th, 6:00 p.m. at the Jean Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, May 5th, 9:15 a.m. at Irving School. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 11th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. As usual, I'd like to encourage anyone, if you see something, say something. Call 911. That's the only way that the police know that something is going on in your neighborhood. We have to be their eyes and ears because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports closed. Next up on Agenda Ordinance, Third Reading Final Passage. We have none tonight. Number 11, Introduction of Ordinances.
2311, An Ordinance Creating a New Fund, Fund 2476 and to Appropriate Funds Within the City of Hammond for the Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative, Ready, Grant.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting at 5:15 on May 8th and a public hearing also on May 8th.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. This grant was developed by the State of Indiana. They launched a Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative with $500 million that was left from the ARP money. They have divided that, those $500 million amongst 60 municipalities for which we will receive $3,820,000. And according to the State Board of Accounts, we need to have two new line items for those funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes on first and second reading. Nine zero.
2312, An Ordinance Reclassifying Certain Lands in the City of Hammond for Zoning Purposes and Amending Ordinance Number 8514, An Ordinance Establishing a Zoning Plan for the City of Hammond, Including the Regulations and Maps to Administer the Zoning Plan in Order to Provide for Orderly Growth and Development Within the City, All in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as 2201 Calumet Avenue.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that 23-12 passes through first and second reading. The notice of intent to consider for May 8th, 2023, that the council as a whole will meet at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, 23.
A motion and a second. Senator McHerson, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson.
This ordinance has to do with changing the classification of the property known as the Clark Football Field Athletic Complex from S2 institutional district to an R1 single-family residential district that is constructed, operated, and contains single-family residential subdivisions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes nine zero. That's the conclusion of Introduction of Ordinances. Next up, Resolutions.
Resolution 23R-03, Awarding Build/Operate/Transfer Agreement and Taking Certain Other Related Actions.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for passage of 23R-03.
Second.
Motion is second by Councilman Spitali, the second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
As discussed earlier in caucus and earlier at this meeting, this Build/Operate/Transfer Agreement will clear the way to pursue a loan that will be, the developer will be contracted, will be passed in discretion.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. President. It's my understanding that as part of this agreement, there's no cost overruns or, or change orders that will be in this building of it, that this is the final price. And I would just like to know, like the question was asked in caucus, what guarantees does the city have? That if the, if the building materials or labor costs go up, what guarantees will there be as far as not having the cost overruns in there?
I can answer that if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yes, you're exactly right. You could have set a better action extension for it and contract for it. What the guarantee price can stated here tonight means that Hassy and the contractor for the project are saying that they will deliver it for that guarantee price. And so the only, only possible way that you go over budget would be if the city were to add scope and request that scope to be added from Hassy. You cannot, you cannot have it vice versa. So you stated it perfectly there, sir.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
So Greg, that begs the question then, if construction costs are higher than 8.1 million, will anybody, either Hassy or any other outfit, try to reduce the kinds of materials and quality of materials that might go into that project to keep it under budget? Do they have any way to limit or is it written as such as written in the contract that the open and construction payment cannot be offered?
Yes, it's, it's said, one, as you said there, so, so it cannot be, chief, and if you want to use that word, you know, halted in order to be budgeted. And the reason that Hassy is able to do that is because for the past approximately 14 months or so, this project has been going through a scoping period whereby they've been working with the architect. They respond to the ultimate request for proposals, also respond to a public bid. And they've been working with the architect to make sure that the project is completely understood and scoped out. And so it's because of that long scoping period that they're able to offer that price. And, and also why we can confidently say that the design, the design that's approved of mine will not be changed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
He said, "Thank you, Mr. President."
Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I'm just trying to collect myself. I did want to mention that the advantage of the build, operate, and transfer, which is a bond agreement, is that there cannot be any change orders. Consequently, the cost should remain at the 8.1 million dollars with some change. That's an advantage to this. And again, ARP funds will be used, ambulance teams will be used, some of the art money will be used as well. And just moving forward with this getting started.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 23R-03 passes nine zero.
Resolution 23R-04, A Resolution Establishing April 28th as Annie Burns Hicks Day within the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for passage of 23R-04.
Second.
The motion and a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I would like for the clerk's office to read the resolution in its entirety, please.
Whereas Annie Burns Hicks was born to Albert and Mary Burns in 1937 as the oldest of 13 siblings in Mississippi and later moved to Hammond, Indiana in 1944 after her father witnessed the public lynching of two young black boys. Whereas Mrs. Burns Hicks attended Maywood Elementary School and graduated from Hammond High School in 1954. Whereas Ms. Burns Hicks graduated from Ball State Teachers College, now Ball State University, in Muncie, Indiana in 1958 and eventually obtained a master's degree from DePaul University in Chicago, Illinois. Whereas she began teaching 5th grade in Gary, Indiana in 1958 and in 1959. Five years after the Brown versus Board of Education decision, Mrs. Brown Hicks, at 23 years old, filed a lawsuit against the school city of Hammond and then Superintendent Lee Caldwell for this discriminatory practice as they had ignored her application and told her Hammond was not ready for a black school teacher. Whereas throughout the lawsuit, Mrs. Burns Hicks was represented by attorney Richard Hatcher, who would later become Gary's, Gary, Indiana's first African-American mayor. Whereas after the lawsuit was settled, Mrs. Burns Hicks was hired as the first African-American schoolteacher within the school city of Hammond and began her 40-year teaching career in 1960. Whereas Mrs. Burns Hicks taught primarily 1st grade for over 40 years at Maywood Elementary School, co-authored the first full-day kindergarten program in Hammond, Indiana, instituted a formal reading program into Maywood's full-day kindergarten, and worked in the first head start staff program. Whereas in January of 2022, the School City of Hammond Board of Trustees voted 5 to 0 in favor of renaming Maywood Elementary School to Annie Burns Hicks Elementary in honor of the service and dedication exemplified by Mrs. Burns Hicks during her time as a Hammond educator. Whereas on April 25th, 2022, the Hammond City Council unanimously voted to recognize the historical contributions of Mrs. Burns Hicks by passing Resolution R2208. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond that Mrs. Annie Burns Hicks be recognized for opening doors to other African-American educators and leaders while inspiring generations of students and families to be the best they can be. and families to be the best they can be in support of their community by establishing the twenty-eighth day of April as Annie Burns Hicks Day within the city of Hammond.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander.
I ask that I be a co-sponsor on this resolution.
So moved. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
In conjunction with this resolution, I still have a proclamation from our Honorable Mayor Thomas M. McDermott Jr. establishing April twenty-eighth as Annie Burns Hicks Day in the city of Hammond as well. Just wanted to put that on record. And on Friday, we'll be reading the proclamation in its entirety at Annie Burns Hicks Elementary at ten a.m.
Thank you. Any other discussion? 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 Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. Twenty-three R four, passes nine zero.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
As there are several members of the Burns Hicks family as well as representatives from the school city of Hammond here tonight, I make a motion that we pause regular business and open up the floor to allow for them to say a few words.
Second.
Second.
The motion is second.
There is no discussion.
Roll call. Roll call.
Oops.
You need to take a roll, no, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Good evening, council. My name is Scott Miller. I serve as your superintendent of schools for school city of Hammond. Let me just real quick, thank you for again supporting our seniors, fifteen of them in, through the scholarship program. That is a difference maker for our kids. But to honor and establish that April twenty-eighth is going to be celebrating the legacy of Annie Burns Hicks is really just another fitting tribute to also go along with us renaming Maywood Elementary in her honor. As far as the school city, what we've done the past year though is we have worked with the family and with some of our educators to establish lesson plans around her legacy, around all the different grades. And so on the twenty-eighth, we'll be implementing these lesson plans in all of our schools, not just Annie Burns Hicks, but across all of our schools so they can learn her story and legacy. And that's not just going to be a one-time thing. That's going to be a forever thing in our schools. So again, thank you. I'd like to also thank, I have two of my board of trustees who voted on that here tonight, our current board president Lisa Miller and our vice president Cindy Murphy. So, thank you. And we also have, I'd like to call up Ms. Letera Smith. She's the principal of Annie Burns Hicks. She didn't know I was going to call her, but I'd like for her to just speak for a moment about the impact of this name change and how, you gotta come on up, of how this has been for, yes. Of the impact of how this is, as you might know, we've had a consolidation, not just at high school, at elementary. And we had students from Lafayette and some students from Columbia and students from Maywood all come together. And I'd like you to talk about how this has brought all the kids together.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Miller said I wasn't expecting to come up this evening, but thank you for having me. So we started this journey last year on April twenty-eighth when we rebranded our school and renamed it after Mrs. Annie Burns Hicks. And as Mr. Miller said, we have joined multiple communities within our school. Our students from Columbia, Lafayette, as well as former Maywood students as well. So rebranding our school, renaming our school after Annie Burns Hicks was an opportunity to mesh all those communities together. We were able to work as a team and work as a school to work on a new logo for our school, new school colors, a new mission for our school. The students got an opportunity to meet Ms. Annie Burns Hicks in person, so that was a great opportunity for them. But it's just been a way to motivate our students and motivate our staff. Her story and her legacy is so powerful and it's so inspiring to them. To see our students, the pride that they have to say that they go to Annie Burns Hicks is just phenomenal. And they always ask, "Is she coming back? Is she coming back?" We have our Annie Burns Hicks Day scheduled for this Friday, and the kids are hoping that she arrives, but we've already talked to them that she probably would not be in person. But we're going to try to do what we can to keep her legacy alive at Annie Burns Hicks Elementary. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maxine Simmons, but I should call myself Maxine Burns Simmons. This family just has embraced me to do all their speaking for them. Again, to Mr. Miller and the school board of trustees, we do appreciate what they have done thus far, and we are expecting more things as the years go on for Mrs. Hicks. But you know, in nineteen fifty-seven or fifty-eight, I probably wasn't even born, close to it, but maybe not. But you know, Sam Cooke made a song about, "A change is gonna come." And you know, I've seen this change with Mrs. Hicks and the school district and now with the civil city in making her special and a day. And that the fact that she's alive, to see all these accolades that she's getting now. And there are three sisters in the audience that they would stand. They have gone on this journey with myself and the school board for over a year. And one of the sisters actually volunteers at the school faithfully. She is a faithful volunteer. So again, I want to say thank you to you as the city council for doing this for her. And we hope that on Friday, you wear powder blue and white, because those are the school colors.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Now that we've voted, I too would like to be added to this ord- resolution. And I encourage the rest of our council members to be added as well.
Mr. President. I remember Ms. Hicks from when I, a hundred years ago, when I used to deliver the mail over there. And I never had a hat on my head. And she'd always tell me to put a hat on my head, or she'd crack me over the fingers with a ruler. And I'm like, "Don't tempt me, because I like pink." And she would laugh, but I want to be added as a sponsor too.
Safe to assume we can add all of us to the, to the resolution?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
If possible, I would like to also welcome any family, school city representatives to come up here to take a picture with us as well.
You gonna do that after the meeting?
We can do it now.
We can do it now.
Okay.
Rules are still suspended.
The rules have been suspended almost.
Yeah, we did.
Can the council as a whole get off tonight?
Pardon?
You put the council as a whole as a sponsor?
Yes.
Would you like to come up, take a picture while we have rules suspended?
That was the one I, I want to tell.
What's the background? Here? Do a little self-defense.
You got a self-defense.
I feel that way.
All right. Jake, could you do one?
I'm just gonna send it to him. Just gonna send it.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
I make a motion that we go back to regular business.
Second.
The motion is second. We go back to regular order of business. Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski? Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. Nine zero, we go back to regular order of business. Okay. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other unfinished business? Any other unfinished business? Finished business is closed. Public expression. Does everybody sign that wants to speak for public expression? I'll call you up when it's your turn. Reminder, you have three minutes. And I don't know, you might be up next anyway. Alberto Ochoa, first up.
Good afternoon. Alberto Ochoa, sixty-six fifty Kansas Avenue. I wanted to come up here and give my thoughts and prayers to the family, from the families, from the unfortunate accident that occurred. You guys already said it earlier. That's what my main intentions were. And also give my thoughts and prayers to the responders, as the weather's going to start getting nicer. I've been seeing a lot more patrolling out there. They've been doing a good work. And I think that hopefully, like you guys also stated earlier, we are the eyes out there. To have the community also stay out and let the police know of anything so we could, you know, keep our kids safe out there. They'll be riding bikes soon. And hopefully, you know, cars and people slow down and think about the kids on the bikes and on the skateboards or wouldn't know that the children. And just say thank you for everybody for your good work. Thanks.
Alberto. Next up, Dave Maturra.
Okay, thank you again for allowing me to talk. I know this is in hindsight, but I wanted to talk about the, you passed the third reading and final passage of redistricting or rezoning Clark Field. You know, as we all know, Clark Field was a piece of public property. It was used by the high school and the community. When the high school was closed, the community still actively used Clark Field. I could see people playing tennis there. I could see seniors walking the track. I could see people practicing soccer, baseball. Even though it wasn't used by the school city of Hammond, Clark Field was still being used by the local community, which said it was needed. And when I, when Hammond was consolidating their schools and they said, "We're going to close Clark High School," my first thought was fantastic. Clark, Clark Field can be merged into the park between Wolf Lake and George Lake. What an ideal piece of property. I can't think of a better piece of property in the city. And it will make that all one continuous park, one green space. How fantastic. And the environmental center was there. But then, all of that came to an end. I went to a meeting and I found out, wow, where was I? In a dream world? Things had been planned already. The environmental center was being evicted. It was going to be knocked down. There were no plans for a park. It was going to be developed. As a matter of fact, not only residential, but commercial, multi-story buildings. The mayor wanted four-story buildings so people could sit on their balconies and look at Wolf Lake. And I thought, "Well, what a tragedy." And then I was at another meeting and the city council said, "You know, we've been getting a lot of calls from people. They're really, really anxious. They want to build their house there." Well, who wouldn't? It's between two lakes. It should be a park. That would be like somebody saying, "Hey, we're gonna allow thirty-seven families to move into Yosemite. Do we have any bidders?" Of course you will. Who wouldn't? And that makes me think that it was the wrong decision because it's supposed to be community property. It's supposed to be used for the community. The community actively used it, even when the school city didn't. So I thought, "Well, can we do anything about it?" And of course, the mayor had a series of meetings and it was scaled down. No commercial, no four-story buildings. Great, great, but we're still going to develop it. Make it green. That wasn't an option. We're going to develop it. And, okay, are we going to develop it with a developer? Is the developer going to put his money on the line? Is he going to put in the infrastructure? No, the public is. And I said, "Well, why would the public do that? Isn't that my money and the rest of the taxpayers' money?" Well, the public's going to subsidize this. And then I thought to myself, "Well, what's in it for the average citizen in the city of Hammond? We get to drive by and we say, 'Look, there's thirty-seven nice, beautiful houses there.'"
Thank you, Mr. Maturra. Thank you. Next up, Ken Ro. I'm sorry, Carolyn Marsh. Next up, Carolyn Marsh.
I thought I was signing up for the public hearing, but I'm going to speak here. I would want to speak after some other, but I'm going to speak now. You know, I heard comments by the city lawyer that, boy, McDermott made a lot, and Kelwinski, Mark Kelwinski, boy, they did a lot, they made a lot of green space, taking out those trucking companies. Well, you know what? A lot of that bike trail is mitigation for Hammond's continually allowing industry to pollute Wolf Lake. So they were gonna, you're gonna, City Hammond's going to be fine, big time, by the Army Corps of Engineers or the U.S. EPA for polluting. And they said, "Well, we'll settle this and build this bike path." So there's a lot of things that just aren't known or said. Cargo was a big polluter of Wolf Lake, and they still violate their permit today. Also, Hammond is in big, has big problems with flooding. And to build homes in Robertsdale in the Clark, which is a field, two fields, football and baseball field and other green space, and in Hessville is a real problem for Hammond because you are borrowing money from the Little Calumet River. Or I don't even think borrowing, they're giving you money from Little Calumet River Basin Commission, which taxes homeowners, taxes my house so that Hammond can build another station to contain, try to contain the sewer, sewage that is going out of Hammond into the Grand Calumet River and the Little Calumet River. So you're continually not in compliance with the laws, the rules. You are overdeveloped. You cannot handle what is right now being built. So there should be no new building permits because you have a real flooding problem and you have a threat for more flooding going on with this continually adding to the sewer system and then depositing the sewage into the two rivers. And this is unacceptable in most cities, the way you operate. Thank you.
Next up, Ken Ro.
Greetings, council. Mr. President. Just to alert everyone, there's been no parked trains in Hessville for five days. And I was wondering, what's causing this? Is it the commotion that we're giving them, the harassment, you know, calling them up, writing letters?
right now, and guess what, those stake markers go right down the center of the crux of the High Tolston Dunes, and the highest point in all of Hammond will be leveled, highest natural point. We're cutting down hundreds of trees, if not thousands, we're leveling 4,700-year-old dunes. Now, keep in mind, this is for a project that doesn't solve the number one problem they claim it's going to solve, and the mayor has admitted it. He said, "If there's a weakness in this project, it doesn't solve that problem." Well, I find that kind of ironic, since that was the number one problem listed to the state of Indiana in their application, the number one reason, the danger with kids hopping trains. That will still be the case after you spend $14 million and counting. Kids were thrown under the bus here, the habitat is going to be destroyed. This is a boondoggle of a project, and it should be shut down. Thank you.
Next up, Carl Wolf.
Thank you, everyone, nice to see everybody tonight. So I've learned, the number of times I've been up here speaking now, that I think it's good to start with some kudos, and to, you know, point out the good work that's been done by the Council and the administration, because there has been good work, there's, you know, Wolf Lake and the park is a wonderful family destination, there has been work to build trails, the preservation, to whatever degree, I guess Carolyn Marsh knows better than I do, I would, I'm sure of it, but to whatever degree, Wolf Lake has been preserved. I appreciate the work to deindustrialize the area around Wolf Lake, cut down on traffic has been mentioned here by the administration, all good steps, the work done by the city to remediate the properties with high lead levels in Robertsdale, very important, but as you all know, more must be done. And while the golf course is nice, and it's been there, what, 10, 15 years now, they repurposed a garbage dump, golf courses are decidedly unfriendly to the environment, that's pretty well-known. Developing Clark Field would be good in that it brings more single-family homes to the community, but it is to the detriment of the environment in that area, missing an opportunity to build more parkland, bringing back our environmental heritage. To say nothing of the ongoing pollution wrought by the BP Refinery, and Cargill, and Unilever, and Cleveland Cliffs, and the legacy pollution of Federated Metals, and the ongoing pollution from that site, and then the irony today is that in the building of a new fire station, to which I don't really claim any particular opinion on it, but the irony of it is that in that process, it's going to be built on the site of a shuttered environmental center? That's pretty ironic. So as I urged the mayor at the mayor's night out, and I urged the council, it is in all of our best interest to listen to the canaries in the coal mine who are raising the alarm around the need for environmentally sustainable development. You have an army of citizen experts who care deeply at your disposal. Instead of relying on people to be aware of weekday committee meetings and hearings where these projects are put in motion, seek their consultation, ask for their opinions, take their considerations seriously from the beginning to the end of the process, because the mayor's night out, the occasional mayor's night out, the bi-weekly council meetings, and midday committee meetings are where we get to express our thoughts, and that's not cutting it.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
E.J. Gerdic.
Hi, everyone. Before I speak, I'd like to congratulate the city and the schools for achieving this holiday to honor an outstanding woman. That's awesome. Congrats, guys. So I'm here to speak about the proposed bridge project on Parrish Avenue and the destruction of the Briar East Dunes. I mean, we're here in, like, we're turning baseball fields into subdivisions, we're destroying a dune for a bridge, you know, allegedly, and we're building a brand-new firehouse, even though the guy just said, "We don't know if we can expand it," but we've approved it now, so that's in the past. So, I mean, we're destroying an environmental center, my question is, why? And so, for the dunes, the city has pointed out two public safety concerns multiple times, and it's the kids crossing for school at Grand Avenue, that was the number-one issue when we applied for the grant, and it's because kids have to climb over trains if they're parked in order to go to school. And I've had the privilege of talking to a couple hundred residents of Hessville over the past couple weeks, and I've often heard, "Why don't you just build a pedestrian bridge?" And I wonder the same thing. Well, the other public safety concern is emergency response time, and so, you know, it's a public safety concern if emergency vehicles have to navigate around a parked train, and that's true. But the proposed bridge project is dubious as an effective solution, because it closes two existing train crossings. And so 90% of the time, when there's not a parked train, you know, your proposed project is going to be slowing down emergency response time, because there's going to be closed crossings, and that's a public safety concern, that's created by this project. And an underpass solution solves both of these, an underpass at Grand Avenue solves both of these handily, and so I don't know why, why the city is hell-bent on, you know, destroying the environment for new development. I mean, we just approved the eight-million-dollar project for a developer, and then there's two new residential developments. I mean, the original proposal for the dune bridge project include a residential project, too. So I can only assume it's for developers, I'm not sure, though. I mean, I don't know why you're doing it.
Thank you. George Stoyer.
George Stoyer, Robertsdale. I've been following this controversy over the building of the bridge and a couple other environmental issues, and there is a price to progress, and that's what we're talking about here. Now, it may not be the way you define progress, the way I define progress, or the way Ken and his group define progress, but progress is at stake. It's been politicized, too, the mayor decided he's going to run on it. I think one of the councilmen here is running on it, and they're running, and the people can vote, and, you know, who knows what can happen. But it is progress, things are changing, and there is a price. I'm sure you guys are aware of this, I'm not saying anything new. I just wonder, this sense of regression, "Let's go back to the environment before we had any development, blah, 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 blah." The world doesn't work that way. We've got demands being made on our infrastructure that have to be met, and the mayor, and I guess you people on the council have decided to go one way, and that's the way it is, and I guess, you know, you have to answer for it one way or another, but it is progress. You know, I, for one, personally, I'm for the bridge, but, you know, that's just me. And all this stuff about the kids are going to have to go under the train to get to school, my understanding is, they'll have to go a little bit out of their way, use the bridge, and they'll have to adjust, like we all have to adjust. There's a lot of things that you guys do up here, as you well know, that I don't really like, and, you know, it's just, it's just, that's just the way it is. There's give, there's take, there's compromise, you know, but there has to be some progress if we're going to meet the demands of our citizenry, the infrastructure of our city, et cetera, et cetera. It's just a price of progress. Some people have, we agree, there is no right and wrong, and I keep seeing this analysis or this argument here breaking down into an implied right and wrong. It isn't, there is choices. You guys have chosen, the mayor has chosen, this route. He has the votes, he has the position, these guys have chosen other priorities, and that's the way it is. There's some winners, there's some losers, hopefully it's non-zero sum, and you do the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.